I now declare the 2016 Brattleboro Union High School Annual Meeting to be in order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before you get seated, as is our custom at this annual meeting, just a moment of silence for those within our five-member towns who have passed on in the past year. Thank you. Please be seated. That was graceful. Good evening, everybody. Just to, again, draw your attention to our meeting rules, page three of the yellow booklet, if you would please, I want to go over some of the pertinent items. Again, if you wish to be part of the district meeting, which you do, you're here, and, again, if you would like to be called upon, please rise with your voter card and address the moderator. All voters must be in the sections reserved for that purpose, and district clerks will be appointed as tellers to be able to handle any ballot voting. We'll announce all results of all voice votes, which would be either by ballot or division of the House, and also, we have a sergeant-at-arms in the back of the room. Is there a police officer in the back of the room? If not, I would identify Doug Crock as the interim sergeant-at-arms. I've seen him play basketball, and he has the elbows for the job. Voting on all matters by voice, by division of the voters, or by paper ballot. A division shall be had at the discretion of the moderator or upon demand of six or more voters. Vote by paper ballot upon demand of seven or more voters. When you wish to speak, please rise, state your name and town after the microphone people have gotten to you, and you won't be allowed a second time on the floor unless anyone else who has wanted to speak has exhausted their want to speak. Debate limited to five minutes per person speaking for the first time on any article. And, as otherwise stated, the meeting governed by Robert's Rules of Order, except modified by these rules as amended. Unless there's any objection, we shall re-adopt these rules as they stand. Seeing no objection, that will be the case. I'd like to introduce Superintendent of Schools Ron Staley, who will introduce the school administration, and afterwards, School Board Chair Bob Woodworth will be introducing members of his board.
Thank you, Tim. So I'd like to introduce members of the administration: High School Principal Steve Perrin, Assistant Principal at the high school Chris Day, Dean of Students Kate Margadis, Middle School Principal Keith Lyman, Assistant Principal Tom Dotton, our Director of Special Education Marissa Duncan-Hawley, and our Coordinator of Special Ed for BUHS VI Peg Brown, our Career Center Director Michael Burnett, and I think I saw our Curriculum Coordinator Paul Smith in the crowd. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair would like to call upon Mr. Bob Woodworth, the Chair of the Brattleboro Union High School Board, to introduce the other board members.
I will do that, but before I do, I would also like to introduce our business manager, Frank Rucker, a guy who knows all the numbers and what they mean. Thank you. And the BUHS No. 6 Board is here in its entirety tonight, and starting from the far end, Russ Janus, representing Brattleboro, Pat McMahon, Putney, Ian Torrey, Brattleboro, Mike Collier, Vernon, Sean Murphy, Guilford, Ruth Barton, Dummerston, Lori Cartwright, Brattleboro, and Ricky Davidson, Brattleboro.
Thank you, Mr. Woodworth. Again, when you seek to speak, please rise with your voter card, and wait for the microphone passers to get to you. They are tonight Michaela Reardon and Teagan Day. I hope you're getting community service credit for this tonight. Good. And BCTV is here. Film... Yes, wait for the microphone.
Rafael U. Mike Corbiel, Brattleboro. It's my first visit here to the Union High School District Meeting.
Do you have a point of order, sir?
Mr. Moderator, I would like to ask the Board, or the Chairman of the Board, or all of them, why must this meeting be held in February before town taxes, town meetings, and why cannot it be held in May, probably Tuesday or Saturday, the third week in May? I wish to discuss the answers.
We would ask that the Board and/or Administration please address the question.
I'll let somebody chime in, but as a practical matter, it's important that we get our budget in place. It affects the budgets of the other towns. And, secondly, from a practical matter, to start sometime in May and not know until then what we have to work with, we have contract situations that we have to deal with, so there needs to be adequate time for that. I'm not aware of an exact statutory requirement for the date of the meeting. The other point, Saturday was brought up, and we did, back in 2009, I believe, we tried a Saturday meeting, and if you look at the attendance records at the meeting, you'll see that it was no different. As a matter of fact, it was a little bit less than it had been prior, attendance was prior to that. I don't know if anybody wants to add?
Mr. Staley?
Well, I just want to reiterate what Chairman Woodworth said about teachers' contracts. If we're unable to issue contracts, we'd be in a position to actually lose teachers that would be considering other options that late into the contract season. We need to issue contracts in April. And the other point that Mr. Woodworth mentioned about other district budgets, they really rely on these numbers when we set our budget based on the state information that we have at this time, which is usually reliable. Frank can speak to that. We usually start getting information around December into late January. But it's really important that we have those BUHS numbers for all of the other district budgets.
Mr. Corbiel, I will allow you a chance to further elucidate before I rule on your point of order.
Well, the first item that you mentioned is that you've got to let the towns know in the district what the amount of the budget has been passed in order for them to set the tax rate and all that stuff. Number one, the town does not have to know what you are spending. In the vote of a town meeting, any town meetings, they say, "And any amount that the Union High School would give us at their annual meeting, they have passed the budget." Now, the tax rate is not set until June. There's no need of the towns knowing what that budget figure is until they're ready to set the tax rate. And as far as I'm concerned, you are using estimated figures from the state of Omaha as to what you're going to be getting, and you always have to adjust it, and you usually end up with a surplus on your budgets. Now, why can't we wait till the legislature gets out of session and you know exactly what the numbers are before we can vote on the budget? Why did we use estimated items? And the other person, the other thing that I want to talk about is that the weather in February is terrible, and probably a lot of voters like myself, I don't go out at night anymore, and I can't go to a Southern Conference meeting because if I slip on the ice, I'm afraid I'm done for. Now, why do we have to have it? When I saw the snowstorm last night, not much, but I thought you were going to call a snow day, and they called a snow day for the school, and I was going to say, "Why don't we have a snow day for this meeting?" And recess it and go into a different time. Now, I don't think you have to have this meeting in February. You can have it in March, April, or May. Doesn't matter, but get us out of the weather. And I am appalled that we have fifteen hundred, fifteen thousand voters in the school district. And we have how many here tonight? What's the count tonight?
We will have the count at the end of the meeting. Please finish your point, Mr. Corbiel.
All right. Thank you. I mean, that's my discussion, and that's my question.
And I'm going to say thank you, and if there are other, no other points to be considered, we will continue. And what I was going to say is that BCTV is filming this for later broadcasts, so please keep that in mind. Restrooms are down off of the southeast corner of the building. The exits are plainly marked. The food is out in the lobby. The BUHS Costa Rica Exchange selling drinks and treats. The students in the exchange hosted Costa Rican partners in January. They look forward to traveling to Costa Rica in April. They've made a lot of delicious treats that they'd be more than happy to sell and pack up to go for you after the end of the meeting, if that's what you choose. So, with all of the procedural issues taken care of, we would then move on to Article Number One. Article Number One is written to act on reports of officers. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Mrs. Barton?
I move that the reports of the district officers be accepted as printed.
Second.
Moved and seconded that the reports of district officers be accepted as printed. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've passed Article One. Article Two, to elect by ballot a moderator, and for consideration of this question, I will defer to Superintendent Staley.
So I'd like to call for nominations for the position of moderator.
Mr. Staley, I nominate Tim Arsenal as moderator for the ensuing year.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I'd ask that all in favor of Tim Arsenal as moderator of the BUHS VI meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions. Turn it over to our moderator. In your, how many, his seventeenth year?
This is the seventeenth.
In his seventeenth year.
It really is true what they say about Brattleboro Union High School. Even though you graduate, you're never allowed to leave. We would move on to Article Number Three, to elect by ballot a clerk. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Davidson?
I nominate Barbara Norakowski as clerk to serve for the ensuing year.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of electing Barbara Norakowski as clerk, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Barbara Norakowski is your clerk. Article Four, to elect by ballot a treasurer. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Janus?
Yes, I nominate Frank Rucker as treasurer to serve for the ensuing year.
Do we have a second? Moved and seconded that we have Frank Rucker serve as treasurer for the ensuing year. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of electing Frank Rucker as district treasurer for the ensuing year, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Frank Rucker is your treasurer for the coming year. Article Five, to elect by ballot one auditor to serve for a period of three years. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. McMahon?
I nominate Gary Carrier as auditor to serve for a period of three years.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded that Gary Carrier be elected to serve as auditor for a period of three years. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of Gary Carrier as auditor for a three-year period, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Gary Carrier is your auditor. Article Number Six, to see what salaries Brattleboro Union High School District VI will vote to pay its officers and directors. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Murphy?
I move that the Brattleboro Union High School District No. 6 be authorized to issue vouchers for the payments of its officers and directors for the ensuing year in the following amounts: to its clerk, the sum of $200; to its directors, the sum of $2,000 each, except that the chairman shall be paid an additional $1,000, for a total of $19,200.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that Brattleboro Union High School District No. 6 be authorized to issue vouchers for the payment of its officers and directors for the ensuing fiscal year in the following amounts: to its clerk, the sum of $200; to its directors, the sum of $2,000 each, except that the chairman shall be paid an additional $1,000, for a total of $19,200. Discussion on the motion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of Article Six is read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and you've passed Article Six. The moderator will note that he accepts no salary for this job, and you are definitely getting your money's worth tonight. Article Seven, shall the voters of the school district approve the school board to expend $27,983,000, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year? It is estimated this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of $17,349 per equalized pupil. This proposed spending per equalized pupil is 1% higher than spending for the current year. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Woodworth?
Thank you. I move that the school district approve the school board to expend $27,983,000, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year. It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of $17,349 per equalized pupil. This projected spending per equalized pupil is 1% higher than spending for the current year.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that the school district approve the school board to expend $27,983,000, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year. It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of $17,349 per equalized pupil. This projected spending per equalized pupil is 1% higher than spending for the current year. Mr. Woodworth, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes, I would like to, please. Thank you.
Please continue.
Well, this year, budgeting has been even more of a challenge than usual. This is the ninth consecutive year the Board has given administrators the charge to develop a level service budget and to be as close to level funding as possible. Over the last decade, this has been accomplished through the innovative deployment of our human resources and a tight rein on discretionary expenses by staff and administrators. This year, we had the additional challenge of meeting the requirements of Act 46 as it relates to per-pupil spending. You note that in Article Seven, by statute, we now must state what the resulting cost of our request will be per equalized pupil. If you refer to Page Eight in the summary report, the small book, line 22, you will see that the allowable growth rate for Act 46, spending per equalized pupil for BUHS No. 6, is $17,354 per equalized pupil, and our budget comes in just under that at $17,349. In raw dollars, we are about $6,000 below the limit that would trigger the penalty. It's a tight budget. In order to meet this requirement, we had to make some difficult decisions. Operating cost increases such as the 8% increase in health care premiums and previously negotiated contract salary increases would have put us over the allowable growth limit. Although significant savings have been achieved by reallocating our human and physical resources between programs and among the three units, that is not enough. So after careful evaluation of all programs and staffing levels, further cuts were made in personnel and other spending categories. Our focus in this was to reduce administrative costs while continuing to fund our direct instructional needs. We continue to support innovative programs such as the Collegiate High School Dual-Credit Program and our growing STEM and Visual and Performing Arts Academies. We continue to fund the upkeep of this great facility to avoid falling into the deferred maintenance trap. There are no requests, you'll note, for additional capital funding in this budget. Our five-year capital plan is outlined on Page Ten of the summary book. Most of the proposed work for fiscal year 17 will be accomplished within our operations and maintenance budget with a small draw from our capital reserve fund. The bottom line is a budget that is essentially level-funded at 3/10 of 1% over last year, and one that allows us to meet the educational expectations of the state and community at a cost that taxpayers support and value. The BUHS Board has unanimously approved this budget. We appreciate the efforts of staff and administrators to present a responsible spending plan for the coming year. We hope you will approve this budget as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on Article Number Seven. Chair would recognize the woman in the back of the room. Please get her a microphone.
Thank you. Margaret Cassidy, Putney. Mr. Moderator, I move to add $12,000 to the budget, the equivalent of the cost of the .25 language teacher position that was reduced in the BAMS budget.
Is there a second to the motion? That is a second. Your hand up? Okay, thank you. Moved and seconded that Article Number Seven be adjusted by adding $12,000 to the budget, the cost of the 25% language teacher position reduced in the BAMS budget. Mrs. Cassidy, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes, please.
Please continue.
I speak for Judy Abascal, the former head of the Language Department at BUHS, who could not attend tonight's meeting, and myself in making this motion. We are very grateful for the hard work of the BAMS and BUHS administrators and board members in preparing next year's budget, and we know they had to make many hard choices in the face of overall decreasing enrollment. One of those decisions was to reduce the BAMS language teaching staff from 1.25 positions, one full-time teacher and a .25 teacher, to just one full-time position at a time when the enrollment in language classes has actually increased over the past few years. Together, these teachers teach 291 students in French VII, French VIII, Spanish VII, Spanish VIII, German VIII, and Introduction to World Languages. We believe that teaching so many students in so many different classes would not be realistic for one full-time position. With no benefits and no planning time, we believe that this part-time position is a bargain for the school and essential to maintaining the district's strong language program. We recognize that voters cannot direct the Board to make any specific expenditures. We hope that a positive vote will demonstrate the BUHS district voter's support for maintaining the district's strong language program. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Further discussion on the Cassidy Amendment to Article Number Seven. Mr. Staley?
Thank you. I think as Bob Woodworth stated, there were a lot of challenges as we were developing this budget, and quite frankly, the reductions in staff really were based on low class sizes. Class sections that had been typically 15 to 18 students have dropped in some cases to five to seven students in a class. The foreign language position is a .25 full-time equivalent, so 1/4 of a full-time position. We also had to make several other reductions, including a full-time art position at the high school, an English position that we did not refill, Career Center positions that were reduced by .17%, 33%, and two full-time reductions in the administrative staff. So those were really tough cuts, but I think the key to this is that we're not cutting any programs or services for students. All subject area classes are being maintained, and students will have the same educational programs and options as they have had in the past. So, just in terms of foreign language, to talk about the support that we have for that program, we do have the dual-credit program where our students at the high school level, juniors and seniors, are able to get college credit from SIT and Marlboro College in their language program. It's a great benefit to our students and families. We actually have 50, over 50 dual-credit courses throughout the high school and Career Center, so those are really great programs for students and families. The additional $12,000, if we put this back into this budget, as Bob said, the allowable cap that we have for spending is $17,354. We're, I think, $5 under that, $17,349. So if we put $12,000 into this budget, we're above the cap, we hit a penalty, and it's going to increase taxes as a result of that. So I would let you know that we're very supportive of foreign language in all the programs that we have at BUHS, the middle school and Career Center. We just can't justify programs in classes with five to seven students in them.
Further discussion on the Cassidy Amendment. Middle of the room, a gentleman with his
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Staley, because as, when I heard that figure, I believe my name, oh, name and town, Richard DeGray, Brattleboro. I saw that it would trigger the cap, and Frank, I think it's important that you explain to the body here this evening what that penalty would be, and I would also remind people and the Board, back when I was on the Board in the mid-'90s, the body approved money to come back into a budget for a program, and I agree with what was set up there. It's difficult when you're making reductions. So the body did approve of a certain amount of money put back in the budget, but the Board, that year, did not fill that position that the body wanted. And the funny thing about that is that the following year, nobody asked if the Board filled that position, and so there was never any follow-up from the body as to say, "Hey, did you do what we asked?" The Board is not required to do what the body wants. We do not have line-item authority. So although I support foreign language, the penalty is quite severe if we support this amendment. Thank you.
I believe the administration was interrogated, Mr. Rucker specifically, if you choose to.
Sure. So as both Bob and, and Ron have indicated, if you look at page eight on your summary document, and you're also in the full annual report, page 39, that, that's the, that's the school funding formula calculation as, as developed and required to be published by the Agency of Education. And what we're referring to is the, the line 26, on the left side of that document, there's a, there's a small reference to a series of lines, and it's line 26 is the, the proposed school tax rate. Right now, it's $1,7578, based on the proposed budget that the board has approved and has been warned. The number that Ron just referred to, if you go up a couple of lines, it's the line 24, um, that's our, uh, that is our current proposed spending per student, and that again is what's been warned and what Mr. Woodworth has, has referred to. So the, the issue is line 22, one more jump up the page. The, the state says if you, if we exceed that number, line 22, $17,354, then to answer Mr. DeGray's question, the, the tax calculation says that, um, of course, you'll appropriate enough if the electorate approves that to fund $17,354, but they're going to put a double tax, they're gonna essentially duplicate the tax for the difference between the, the cap amount of $17,354 and whatever the new number is. The new number would be $17,366, okay? So we would, we would be up about $12 over the cap per student, and that would produce a incremental tax rate. Instead of $1,7578, we would be going to about $1,760. So we, we would go up about 3/10 of 1 penny on the, on the end. So when we start talking about tax rates, I know it's, it's easy to lose folks, but if, if we look at line 26, um, when you're talking about a tax rate of $1,7578, just imagine on a $100,000 house, that would be $1,757. Okay? We'll lose that eight on the end. So if we go to $1,760, you know, it's, it's not a substantial change to that rate on, on $100,000, but it, it is a change. And as Mr. Woodworth has indicated, given the way the, the state has essentially incentivized boards to stay within these, what's called cost containment targets, you know, we felt it was fiscally responsible to stay under the state's cap.
Thank you. Further discussion on the amendment to Article Number VII. A gentleman with his hand up, right there.
Andrew Davis, Brattleboro, District Three, if that means anything. I come to this meeting as much as I can. I haven't missed many over the years. I'm not here as a single-issue person. And I am an educator. I'm also a part-time educator. I know that part-time teachers give a lot more than the full-time equivalently, equivalency. Someone's working for .25 of a full-time job, we're getting a lot more than .25 out of them. That happens throughout the system. I understand the arcane complexity. I actually, I don't understand it, but I understand it's complex. It's not foreign language that's going to trip this. We're talking about a $27 million budget. So the response that we can't keep foreign languages moving forward because that's the issue that will trip this penalty is a false connection. There's $12,000 in this budget. When you look at all of the expenses wrapped up in 27-plus million dollars, it's not foreign languages that are going to trip this penalty. That money is somewhere. I wonder how you expect to teach over 200 students who could tell me which languages are being taught at BAMS? I mean, there's 200 languages in the world. We're spending millions, billions of our dollars in the Middle East. Why aren't we teaching Arabic? We're not being proactive here. We're cutting something that's perceived as a small program, but it's of huge value to our students and the future. $12,000, it's not foreign languages that are going to trip this penalty. It's $12,000 somewhere else in a 27.8 million budget. I would argue there's gotta be a way to keep our foreign languages. We're teaching them in the elementary school. We should have a lot more than five or six kids in a class if we're doing it right. And if we want to have that vision, I think we can get those classes larger and even move forward with foreign languages. It's not the right time in history to be retreating on foreign languages. Thank you.
Further discussion on the Cassidy Amendment to Article Number VII. That side of the room? There's a gentleman coming to you with a microphone, sir. Again, name and town.
George Reed Savery from Brattleboro. I'd just like to thank the board for the work they've done on this and keeping the cap in mind. It seems to me that there are a lot of places that would really, a lot of programs, a lot of departments, that would appreciate $12,000 more. The same is true in the town school budget, the same is true in the municipal budget in Brattleboro. In the past, programs have, not programs, but services have been reduced or cut in the other budgets, keeping in mind the fact that it's very difficult for many of the taxpayers to pay the tax at this time. I think it's a very responsible action to reduce if there's not the students in the class, and if there's only five to seven students in a class, I feel it's appropriate, and I would appreciate just leaving the budget the way it was presented. Thank you.
Further discussion on the amendment. The lady right there, since no one else has raised their hand, please go ahead.
Linda Brown, Brattleboro. I just wanted for the record to say that in the .25 position, the classes are full to capacity. I'm the French instructor, and the enrollment has actually increased in the second semester. We're full to capacity with a waiting list.
Thank you. Further discussion on the amendment. Down front here, a woman on this side of the room. Microphone is coming to you. From the other side.
Nancy Olson, Putney. My concern is that if students have been studying language in the, in the elementary schools and then have a two-year gap before they can pick it up at the high school, that seems counterintuitive to me and counterproductive, especially since research clearly indicates that younger students learn languages more readily. So I would urge a support of the amendment.
Further discussion on the Cassidy Amendment. Mr. Staley, for purposes of clarification.
Yeah, I just want to clarify what I said earlier. No students are missing opportunities. There are no, it's not a two-year gap where students are not going to be able to take those classes. We have a roster here of, of German, Spanish, French, then an introductory program at BAMS, and, and none of those are going to be cut out. It's just the class sizes.
Further discussion on the proposed amendment.
Mr. Moderator.
Mrs. Barton.
Is this the proper time to call for a paper ballot?
If you are sustained by, again, according to our meeting rules.
What?
By, by a total of seven people, do I see support for a paper ballot? We need at least seven hands to call for a paper ballot. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yes, you shall have your paper ballot. So when we do that, we will announce the voting instructions. Any further discussion on the Cassidy Amendment? Seeing none, all of you with voter cards have a slip of paper, and please use the orange sheet on the top of your voter card. Yes, that, that's orange.
Yes.
It's a badly colored orange, or, or actually yellow. Make it yellow.
Yes.
All right. Make it the yellow sheet of paper, the, the one that's on the top. All right. Please cast your ballots and bring it to the rear of the room, and the clerks is, do you have a question? Okay, please wait until the microphone comes to you, and we will deal with your question.
Mary Ann Gardner from Vernon. Can you clarify the question on what we're voting for?
Yes, I shall. Thank you. Again, the question is the proposed amendment to Article VII to add $12,000 to the overall budget. If you support the amendment, vote yes. If you do not support the amendment, vote no. Please mark your voter cards. There is a ballot box in the rear of the room, and the chair will now declare a voting Please take your seats. We're reconvening the meeting. On the Cassidy Amendment to add $12,000 to the BUHS District Six budget, a total of 124 votes were cast. Spoiled one, yes, 52, no, 71. I declare the motion has been defeated. We now return to the budget as moved by Mr. Woodworth. Further discussion on the main Article Number VII. In the middle of the room with a hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Richard DeGray, Brattleboro. On page 35 of the yellow booklet, um...
The white booklet. The yellow booklet doesn't have that many pages.
Okay. I'm colorblind. Can somebody talk to me? I have a question and a comment about this year's booklet, but can somebody talk to me about the district-wide budget being up 3.4% when we have enrollment dropping throughout the district, and we have such a significant increase when every other portion of this budget shows a decrease?
The administration and/or the board is interrogated. Mr. Woodworth?
Yes.
Turning a microphone on, Bob.
There we go. I would just start off by saying that that really is almost entirely in the special education section, and I, I'm not going to try to explain how that happens, but Frank can give you an explanation. But if you look in that section that backs it up, there's about that much increase in special education.
Mr. Rucker?
Sure. So on page 41 of the, uh, annual report, you, you see what Mr. Woodworth is referring to. We have the very bottom of the page, special education total up $353,000. And the section of, of what is, that includes is on that bottom third of the report. So it's Program 200, it says special education is the header there, and we have salaries actually down $172,000, you see that? Benefits down $151,000, but we have a significant increase in the, the contracted services that more than offsets, it more than offsets those reductions. The, in that section of the budget, that is attributed to primarily tuition expenses, outside placements for students that, that need additional services. And then we have a, a small increase to this budget in the next section under administration, which is associated with formerly a grant funding that portion of the program. But the State of Vermont has asked the Supervisor Union to centralize special education, and, and that grant is being centralized at the SU as well. So there's a overview.
For revenue?
Oh, oh, yes, thank you. Um, yeah, so always when we talk about, when we talk about special education, very important because school tax rates and, and the funding is, is, is based on any, any related revenue. So the fact that the spending is up will increase revenue, and when I say revenue, that is, that would be a state aid that reimburses districts who have these sorts of costs. And it's about an average of 60%. And our revenue is on...
Page 38.
Yep, page 38. And if you look in the, in the far right-hand column, if you just kind of skim the page and you look at the largest number on the page where you see difference right in the middle, you see special education intensive aid up $229,000. So there isn't, there is a significant increase in spending, but there is also help from the state when, you know, they recognize that if, if a district has high special ed costs, then the funding formula helps support that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. DeGray.
I wanted to talk to you about the new format in the booklet that we received, and certainly as one of your auditors, we did have a brief discussion, and you, you informed the auditors that you were going to come out with a new booklet. Although I do find it fascinating, I do find it somewhat cumbersome to follow, and it is extremely difficult for people, even with the old format, to follow what is going on. And I would ask you to work on presenting us with a booklet with the numbers that's a little bit easier to follow. And actually, when you're talking about staff salaries, I mean, we used to break out by department, and we don't do that anymore, at, at least when I can see the salaries are lumped in. It would be nice to know how many people are associated with the salaries of every department that you are addressing in the booklet. But be that as it may, I, I understand that you are making an effort, but I think we need to go a little bit further to make this booklet as easy as possible for people to follow. Thank you.
Further discussion on Article Number VII. The hand up on that side, the gentleman is coming to you.
Alice Rivas Guilford. I'm just wondering, at the end of the year, when you have the surplus leftover, most outlined schools or towns give the money back to the towns to defer taxes. What is the reasoning behind Brattleboro that they have not done so? And is there an estimated amount over the last five, 10 years that you've given X amount back or to a surplus line item in the budget? back or to a surplus line item in the budget? Where does it go? And how come it does not go back to defer taxes? Because I think this day and age, it's very important to give back to your community when you have surplus, especially with what's going on now with Act 46. And we're being told that we really need to consolidate and, you know, cut costs.
The board and/or administration is interrogated. Mr. Woodworth.
Yes, in general term, every year, we look at the situation. If there is a surplus, which there has been some years, we determine whether we want to use some of that to defray taxes. We also realize that it's a big operation, and we need to have, we need to have some reserves. There, in a $27 million budget, you don't want to be down at a real low level of reserves. So we look at that carefully. We take recommendations from the administrators, and we have, over the years, used significant amounts of reserves to defray taxes, but we also want to try to maintain. And you'll notice if, in this year, based on the budget we're proposing, that our reserve fund will drop some, and we're utilizing some of our funds to make sure that we can stay below that cap. I think every year, you could find it somewhere in there, exactly what we've done.
Mr. Rucker?
Speak to that, yes. So if you were looking at the annual report and you looked at page 38, it's the summary of revenue. We were just looking at that page for the earlier question. Revenues actually start on page 37 and then continue on to page 38. At the bottom of page 38, that answers your question regarding the use of fund balance. So you see there's a line that says total revenues at the bottom, and then use of reserve funds to reduce taxes. I think that's what you were asking. And for this year, you see we're using 700,000 of the fund balance to reduce taxes. And in the fiscal year '16 budget, you see the column just to the left there. Fiscal year '16, the number's 875. And if we went back to fiscal year '15, it was 750,000. And if we went back another year, it was 1,150,000. So the board does have a regular commitment to using fund balance. When you go to page 37, you might say, well, wow, that sounds like a lot of fund balance. Do we have anything left? And that's what page 37 helps us understand. You know, 27 million, just easy math, 10%, 2.7 million. You see, what we show there on the top of page 37 is the general fund reserve. We're starting with the 3.6 million. And then this year, the plan for fiscal year '16, as I just mentioned, was essentially a deficit of 875,000. That's, that was the plan. We ran a $314,000 deficit. So obviously, that's a smaller deficit, which means it was a favorable variance. Didn't use as much as we thought. But when we, when we move through those numbers that we just talked about, and you go down the page, you see if we have 3.3 and we use 875 this year and 700 next year, we're going to be down to 1.8 million. And so you see, that's well below that 10% number that I had started to illustrate.
Further discussion on Article Number 7. Woman in the front. There's a microphone coming your way.
Thank you. I'm Paula Melton from Brattleboro. I have a question about the general fund balance. And given the cap on cost per student and other pressures, I just wonder how we're ever going to get back up to 10%? And is 10% the recommended amount?
The board and/or administration is interrogated. Mr. Rucker? Or Mr. Woodworth? Whoever wants to respond.
Okay. Yeah, so there is no hard and fast rule for public education in terms of a percentage of fund balance. Districts that have choice, where they can't predict the number of tuition students from year to year, tend to have higher fund balances. Districts such as ours that have made substantial investments in facilities and so on, 5% is certainly reasonable, given the types of variances that you can't predict, like some of the things that we've talked about and that Mr. DeGray asked about. So we feel the 1.8 is adequate in that if we had to run it 700,000, we could do that for, you know, more than two more budget cycles. And that's our primary objective, is to avoid a year of going from 700,000 to zero, because we know that that would cause a spike in the tax rate. Every $110,000 is about a penny on the tax rate. So we do have a history of having a good fund balance over the years through the fiscal oversight and good, you know, good budget development. So I think we're in good shape, and as you may have noted on page 37, we also have some reserve for capital.
Thank you. Further discussion on Article Number 7. At the end of the table, Mr. Janus.
Hi, yeah, thank you. I just wanted to respond a little bit to Mr. DeGray's question about the format and the change. And I just want to point out that Frank, this is, this is your second full year? Am I right on that? And that there's been, there has been a big change in the way that the numbers are being run. And correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, in part, it's to match up with tax and regulatory requirements. And so in ways, things are much clearer in ways, but it's really important to see your perspective as well. And I get it, and I hope and assume that that will work on making it, you know, responsive to making it even more transparent. But the amount of work that's been done in terms of not just at the high school, BAMS, Career Center level, but at all the different school districts of trying to unify the budgets and make them, make them conform to standards, I think, has been good. And I know going through budget, the software and the things that Frank can do now, we say, well, what happens if this happens? You know, I don't know exactly how he does it, but he, you know, he pulls these things up, and then there are these new scenarios that come up very quickly. So there are things that we can do that we weren't able to do very quickly. You know, not that it isn't confusing and that we can't do better, but I just wanted to highlight the things that Frank's been working with, besides all of the trying to keep off Act 46 or whatever number we're on, and with solar power and all sorts of things.
Further discussion, Article Number 7. Unless anybody wants to speak, Mr. DeGray, you'll be recognized for a second time on the question list.
Well, one of the issues that I always talk about when you use surplus revenue is that the taxpayers, at some point, will feel the pain, and we are this year, because you have $175,000 less of surplus money that we are, we, the taxpayers, are making up. Is that correct, Frank?
That's correct.
So there's a little over a, about a penny and a third that the taxpayers are affected by when the amount of surplus that you put into the budget this year. So when everybody thinks that using surplus revenue is a great thing, at some point, you don't have revenue to put into the budget, and you make it up the following year. As your comment for Frank, I would say, as an auditor, and I served as an auditor with Jim Kane, we have found a very adequate replacement for Jim Kane, and I really appreciate the work that Frank does for the district. And so I'm very appreciative that we have him as our business manager.
Further discussion, Article Number 7. Seeing none, I will call for a vote again. The motion is that the school district approve the school board to expend $27,983,000, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year. It is estimated this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of $17,349 per equalized pupil. This projected spending for equalized pupil is 1% higher than spending for the current year. Are you ready for the question? If so, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. You've passed Article 7. We move to Article Number 8. Any other business that may come before this meeting tonight? Is there anything from the board or the administration? Anything from the body? If not, I have figures on attendance for tonight. As they say, it's time to read them and weep. In Brattleboro, out of 7,740 registered voters, 64 attended, a total of eight tenths of 1%. Dummerston, 1,661 registered voters, 12 showed up, seven tenths of a percent. Guilford, 1,605 registered voters, 16 attended, that's .9%. Putney, 1,694 registered voters, 13 showed up, seven tenths of 1% were here. In Vernon, out of 1,710 registered voters, 21 attended, that's 1.2%. Thank you, Vernon. Totals out of 14,410 voters, 126 here tonight, that's eight tenths of 1%. Next time, bring a few enemies as well as your friends to next year's meeting. If there's no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Moderator.
Mrs. Barton.
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Take home some cookies on the way home. The meeting is adjourned.